The next item is.
Share with me, Cathy.
Oh, sorry.
Not started the live stream yet.
It's twat in your cafe.
It looks like it's live now.
Yeah, it's now, it's live now.
Great, okay, so item one, apologies for absence. We've just got Sue and I think everybody else is present. Item two, code of conduct. So I'm going to remind members of their responsibility to declare any disclosable pecuniary or non pecuniary interest on any item of business on the agenda, no later than when that item's reached. So if there's anything, you know, speak now. Okay, and then item three, the main event really, the draft budget and parish precept. Now, before we start this, the motion that's before the parish council, I'm going to propose the motion. I don't know if I can get a second for anyone who's seen it. But I think, thank you, Chris. So I'll ask Julian, please, would you read it out?
With pleasure, Chair. So the motion before council is in several parts, in five parts. So section one, this council wishes to place a record its thanks to its officers and employees for their exceptional work in maintaining and managing the delivery of services in unprecedented and ever changing circumstances since the start of the financial year in April 2020. The year 2021, 2022 promises to be as challenging, but set possibly against the landscape of services opening up and normality turning. A sound financial plan and budget to work around therefore remains a priority for the council. Part two would be, the council therefore notes and is happy to accept that the RFO, that's the responsible finance officer's suggestion for income projection in section one, basic premise of the leisure centre model as the starting point for the year ahead. The council also notes that, and thanks the RFO, RFO for the cost reduction exercise she has undertaken and the savings she has secured from changing and modifying contracts from suppliers. Part three, in order to set the precept for next year, the council also notes the borough council requires our precept figure by the second week of January 2021. And this meeting therefore proposes the following actions. Little one, that a meeting of the full council be called at 7pm on Tuesday 12th of January 2021, with the leisure centre management meeting being set for 8pm on the same evening. Both meetings to be virtual. Little two, that members require from the RFO an accurate as possible projection for the year end figures in terms of surplus or deficit in this year's trading at the leisure centre in the wider parish, in order to judge what the year's closing balance will be. This being the obviously, so this being the obviously some carried forward from last year with any addition or subtraction of this year's operational surplus or deficit. Little three, that in calculating this position, the RFO should use the current trading position since Warrington entered tier three and then it's tier two, where the bar is closed and the wider centre partially opened up as the basis for calculating income in January to March 2021. Along with the revised base costs she has negotiated in order to predict the end of year position. And little four, that the paper with these figures be circulated to members no later than 5pm on the Friday before the proposed meeting, this being a requirement to allow members time to consider the financial position with the authority. So then part four in the, in the main numbering, that members resolve to set a budget and precept that protects all areas of service delivery and at the same time limits any precept increase. Furthermore, that if financial position requires the outturn for the year 202021 to require support, the Millennium Fund Reserve be utilised in the first instance to provide this support. And then the final section, section five, if financial position requires the precept to be raised by more than a modest sum of around £5, the council will embark on a cost reduction exercise where service delivery functions that the public appreciate and enjoy from the council will be a priority and other areas of non core family and cost reduction will need to be looked at. This area of this motion will however be for the meeting in January to decide and the basis of the figure supplied by the RFO. In deciding on such cuts, the council will work on such issues in January and March 2021 to undertake such a review. So that's the resolution in front of members, Chair.
Thank you for reading out, Julian. Are there any questions or comments before we put this to the vote from members? Chris, did you indicate?
No, no, I said I was happy to second it. I haven't got any questions, no.
Thank you. Anybody? So we've got, I've proposed it, Chris has seconded that, so we can put it to the vote. So anyone in favour of that motion, could you show your hand? Make sure it's on the screen as well. So I've got one, two, three, four, five, six. Six, four, is that correct, Julian?
I counted the same number, I couldn't see hands from councillor Graham Friend.
Tim, are you, are you in favour?
Sorry, just unmuted. I'm in favour of the motion, yes.
Yeah, so we couldn't see your hand on the screen, that's all right.
Sorry, I took it down too early.
So we've got, Sue, is your hand up? So we've got Sue, Mike, Ross, Tim, Chris, Cathy. Anne, are you in favour?
Yes. You're not setting the book, you're not setting it till January.
Setting out our priorities. Yeah, we're sort of saying that public services come first in all of this.
Yeah, alright, yeah.
Alright, thank you. So that's seven, four. Against?
Yeah, I think I'm still against it.
Two again.
Yeah, I'm against.
Okay.
I know we're outvoted, but yeah, I think it's just, to be quite honest, a bit of waffle.
Righto. And obviously there's no abstentions, everyone's voted. So that motion is carried. Thank you, members. So essentially, we're going to leave this, we're not going to decide the question, the budget this evening. It's probably, you know, with everything up and down and we don't know what's going on, the later we can leave this, we'll have a better picture. I don't know if you agree with that, Claire, the nearer the time, we'll have a better, a better idea of what the outturn position will be because it's difficult at the moment with Covid. You know, you've got tier, with tier two at the moment, but we don't know what we're going to be at the end of the next fortnight, so.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, isn't it, with January, you know, are we going to end up in tier three? Is we're going to have a national lockdown again, so.
And that could affect us. Yeah, and that could affect our business because we're doing a limited amount of stuff with our, you know, renting out the rooms, aren't we? So renting to tier three, that would have an impact on that, so it does make sense. So actions arising from this really are to set the next meeting date. Unless that, was that in the motion, I can't remember?
In the motion, yeah.
Yeah, it was in the motion.
And how are we going to decide? Are we having a subcommittee that deals with this? Any thoughts on that?
Can I speak, Chair?
Certainly.
Yeah, I think the first thing we've got to do is we've got to look at what the outturn's going to be and what the total sums are. If we take a view that we're not going to put, you know, the budget up by more than a nominal sum, you could argue what that could be, £4, £5, £6, £72, £3, 71, £3, 65, you know, it's a sort of penny a day. If the numbers show that there's going to be a big deficit, and I'll cover why, I think, I hope we're not, but we might be in that position, then we set what we agree at that meeting. That might require some discussion on the Monday night before, as this one did. And then if there is a deficit, then I would be suggesting that we set up an all member group at that meeting between January and April to look at, because we've got elections in May, to form a view on how we balance that budget for the new council coming in in May to either ratify or change its protest. But as a count going council, let's say we were £10,000 short. That, you know, £4 increase leaves us £10,000 short. We could raid the Millennium Reserve for that. That might be a reasonable thing to do, but if we're more than that, then we've got to start trimming the budgets that we've spent this year. And things like field maintenance and, you know, do we decrease the seven grand from Peel Hall down to three? Depending on what the gap is, we just don't know. So until we know what that gap is, then we can't set a deficit, a set a deficit budget. I'd thought about borrowing. You looked, Cathy, at the director of finance from Borough Councils confirmed we can't do that. We can't borrow, we have to set, set a, set a balanced budget. So at that point, we would be setting a budget and then working backwards between January and March, January, February, March, to work out how that would work. Which, given the circumstances, we then still wouldn't know whether it'd be at tier one in May or there would be till tiers or whatever, it's all up in the air anyway. But at least we'd have a plan. My only concern with the figures that we've got together, I think the plan of Claire's is absolutely spot on for a starting point for income. Is that if you look at what we've, we've earned so far in the November figures, I have, it is £45,872. And I have as, in the month of November, bringing in £1,212. If we predict, there may be some wiggle room on this, Claire, but if we predict that that's what we're going to get in in December, in January, February, March, we're going to get £50,000 of income. On the models I've seen, and I apologise if I'm misreading them in the Excel spreadsheet, but this is the thing that I, you know, want to work with the RFO on. Those, those models that we have have got income figures. One of them says factored total income £98,000. It, we're not going to be, if that's the outcome for the year, we're not going to be anywhere near that. I'm really nervous of how we land this year and money that we've, we've got available from last year's budget, which I think is only about, is it 9,000? Claire, you may know more than me. I think it's £9,473 with a bit, with a budget that we start on. And how much of that surplus we're going to use all? I just think we need to get as bob on and accurate as possible based on that model of where we were in November plus four months of the same.
Can I speak?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, my understanding of the discussion last night was that the £7,000 that is reserved for the Peel Hall development battle was to come out of the Millennium Fund if necessary. Not that it would be reduced regardless of any budget for anything else. That's, my understanding was that £7,000 would still be there for what we pledged for that battle. Even if we don't need it, hopefully we won't need it, but it should be there ready if we do not cut. That was my understanding.
I think what we've decided to do is to put services first and Peel Hall will be part of that. But if we, if we did have to come to the table and start cutting services, I don't see why any one particular budget, you know, everything, everything's going to have to be on the table if we're going to do a, cutting services, which is what we're saying in the motion that we don't want to do. Then all I'm saying is that, you know, the litter picker, for instance, serves everybody in the parish. So why would that, you know, why should that just be the first thing that's out the door when it actually serves everyone and protecting other things and not touching anything at all in relation to other projects? That, but what we've said is we prioritise all of the public services and we'll try and make cost cutting elsewhere if we have to. But not to keep, not to take, these are the things that are important to people that we serve.
Can I ask you at the moment, Claire, what's your, could you direct me to what the best estimate you think at the moment of the end of year outturn would be? Because there's been a lot of papers circulated and I must admit, I only saw the, the one that was at two o'clock about 10 past seven. Could you, what's, what's the current best plan for where the year will end up?
I haven't done one following the November figures yet. But I've got, obviously, from what Julian's just read from the motion, the actions to complete. So I can get those roughed up next week. Because I'm not on leave until the 24th, so Monday will be my day to catch up on, you know, like, financial bits and pieces at the centre and then Tuesday, Wednesday, I can make sure that they're fleshed out and sent across to people.
Because my concern is that whilst you've got, you've got, it's, it's, it's reasonably standard finance, precisely, it's not rocket science. I don't think there's anything wrong in starting with that prediction that you've got for the year. What you need to know, what the ink, and that was the one that's saying we need at least a minimum of £12,000, was it? £12,000 of support, was it, or £12 increase or something, option B?
No, it was, it was £11 a year increase for, that was based on the budget setting and the expected expenditure for next year. That's no reflection on where the end of the balance was going to be this year. It was done purely as a standalone year.
Yeah, so, so what, what, in terms of round numbers, what does the £11.67 per household mean? What's, what's the sum that that equates to?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking me there, Mike.
I'm watching you.
Well, to balance the budget entirely?
It's going to be made up to date in time for our meeting because the, the outturn position is going to be more accurate, the nearer the time it is. So if Claire, it's directed in the motion when Claire?
Yes, I'm happy, I'm happy.
So we'll, we'll stick with that date. Are you all right with that, Claire?
I'm all right with that, yeah.
We've got a date in the motion of when that information needs to come to members to give them a chance to consider it. And I don't think keep asking her for things is going to help. I think we just let Claire get on with it. Give us that, that information well in advance of the meeting and then we can all consider it and it'll be the most up to date information. Because you said it's, it's up and down, so it's pointless keep asking for figures when she, you know, what will count is what it is at the end, isn't it?
I mean, I love the end of December's figures because we won't, we won't be opening the centre for the two Christmas weeks.
Yeah.
You know, preschool, aren't you, and there's no other room hiring, it's not, we're not just asking.
The ones that's stable, I.
So I can, like I said, I'll run those, the end of December figures and give a best projection from there.
Great, that'll help. Thanks, Claire. Graham?
Yeah, at the recent management meeting, we unanimously voted to recommend no increase in the parish precept. I've yet to see a financial model to that. And that was a unanimously voted on at the management meeting.
It's in the figures, you've got, I believe.
I couldn't find them. It wasn't one of the options that was shown that I could see.
I'm just trying to see and pack it. The, the ones in November, circulated in November had an option for the £11 and they had an option for holding it at where it was, but that basically cut out all the litter picker. You know, I went for the obvious suspect with that litter picker was the biggest one. But like you say, Cathy, what, you know, not necessarily that it would have come all from that, but I did do a sheet and I think I recirculated it today.
In principle, the management committee makes a recommendation to the full parish council, so I don't think it's capable of itself of making decisions like that.
No, I was just advised not to see the model when the management committee.
I think this is, this is the.
Like I said, I, I do believe the model's been done. I'll do, Graham, is I will double check that where it's, you know, whether it's not too clear. And again, I'll recirculate it tomorrow with an email if that's okay.
Yeah, sure, as long as we've got it for this meeting in January and getting rid of the litter pickers.
Chair, just to help.
Sorry.
Sorry, apologies.
Breaking up, I didn't catch that last part, sorry.
I said, getting rid of the litter picker may be one of the options, but there, there could be other options to achieve a zero rise. We're competing with a pub just around the corner in the bar, you know, there's things we could do there. We seem to have a lot of staff compared to other centres. There are, there are other options.
Yeah, I think.
I think, I think this is the thing that I got to, Graham, when I was looking into it, is I think those models are there in the next B of Claire's report. But you've got to then factor in what this year's outturn is. That's the thing that's missing in my, in my mind.
Which is.
We could set, yeah, because, so we could set a budget that's either balanced or not balanced. We could set it to zero sum. But we've still got to pay for this year or we get the benefit from this year. We've got £9,600. We started the current year with a surplus in, we've got £10,000 in the Millennium.
Yeah. Julian, you want to come in?
Sorry, Chair, I didn't intend to cover something. Apologies for that. And in terms of that option, that the no increase in precept option, that's at page seven of the agenda pack in that, in those tables there. The, the, following in from the right hand side shows what would happen next year. The, the boxes highlighted in red show the services that would be cut, which we are not to increase the pre, or the services that could be cut, which we are not to increase the precept.
Yeah.
Can I speak, Cathy?
Certainly, of course you can.
And when you say those are the services that could, will be cut, there are surely, if you.
I don't want any. I don't want any services cut.
No, I understand that, but inevitably there'll have to be some service. But, I mean, taking it from all, but we should be housekeeping the leisure centre more tightly than we are. The leisure centre, I mean, Mike's just said there's too many staff. There's, you know, there's plenty of ways of housekeeping it to pull some money in. It's got to be very tight now, it's not tight enough. Over time, it's never tight enough. You've, it's got to now be, it's like doing your housekeeping, if, if you can't afford it, you can't have it. It's as simple as that. Whether, whether it's the way it's always done, whether it's the way we do it, you can't have it, you've got to now find another model. And all through this, this pandemic, if you like, we've never found another model to run the leisure centre. And it was an ideal opportunity to do so. And we've not taken advantage of it and we're still not taking advantage of it. It gives you another option to run it slightly differently. And whether, well, services have to be cut. I mean, can I just ask one thing? There's a 3% salary rise itemised for the clerk and for the, it's just something, information for the clerk and for the finance officer. Is that realistic? Given how much maybe Borough Council staff will be getting? Does anybody, has anybody got an answer?
As a personal view takes a lead on finance, once we know what the outturn is, once we know what the figure is and once the deficit is, I don't think anything's off the table. I think this is, I think we should look.
No, that's, yeah.
And that's where I agree with you.
You've got to look at it with a.
Yep, I don't think anything's off the table.
Though, to be fair, that Claire has made a lot of inroads into running this on a, you know, in a more efficient.
I agree.
And done an awful lot to cut the costs of running this, you know, I think, I think you've got to recognise.
No, I don't mean it.
She didn't ask for Covid.
But it needs tightening again, Cathy, sorry.
We've had.
To me, it needs tightening again.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think you should tar everyone with the same brush. And I think that what Claire has done or led has, has been to try and cut the costs right down and she's been very successful in that.
I've, that's it, I've never, never disputed that and I've always supported Claire. And I don't like the fact that, I don't feel I can support the finance officer's judgment now because I was a great one for believing you can, you should trust your finance. And it's not that I don't trust her, I think maybe it's slightly adrift in this current situation. I don't think, I think we're going to end up in a terrible mess. And I've always thought that, this isn't new, I've thought it all through this pandemic. We never, we never quite hit the targets.
What should.
And I know it's difficult.
And what should we do? What should we do then?
Well, I think you need, I think you've got too, too many staff.
We.
And I think you need to look very closely at your staff for a staff, sorry, it's breaking, Cathy.
No, I'm just saying it's we because we're all in this, it's not just.
Well, say, yeah, we then, yeah. Well, we need to, we need to look at everything we, everything we provide, every service, every, that much more tightly and slightly off balance than we do now. We, we need to look at it from a slightly different angle than the, the angle we would like to look at it from. That's my view.
Okay.
Chris Vob, we're up. I've, I've never said we're not all in it together, Chris, never said that.
It was me saying that, you, you know, you, if you say.
Oh, no, Chris, but.
Do this, it's we, we're all responsible for this, it's not just.
Well.
Certain people in parish, we're all parish councillors and we're all responsible for this.
Yeah, I think some parts of the parish get better advantage than others, you see. That's all I would say. And I think it's a shame that that happens.
Yeah, but, you know, Covid is an exceptional situation.
It certainly is.
I, I think, I'm just trying to be fair to Claire and, and the team.
No.
They were doing quite a lot to reduce the costs of running this.
I, I'm fully behind Claire and I've never said anything different. If I was going to be, then I'd say it to Claire. I'm quite happy to speak my mind. And I've always supported Claire. In, in a, I think she's got a very, very difficult job, very difficult. And it's, it's a no win situation for Claire.
But you just have, I think you just have to recognise when people are working hard trying to change things.
And I do recognise it, so I wouldn't like to be accused of not recognising it. But I've always been supportive of Claire.
Yeah.
Well, I feel that I have, if she thinks differently then. But the fact I can't agree with her all the time doesn't mean I'm not supportive.
Yeah, I just thought, you know, it just sounded like you were saying it's, it's carried on the same as before and I don't, I don't agree with you, that's all I was saying.
Can I say something, Cathy?
Yeah, sure.
I think what I'm saying is she, she might have got it slightly wrong the way she put it forward, but I think what she means is no matter how, how, how hard Claire works to organise or reduce the cost of the centre, sometimes when you've got a dead duck in the water, you've got a dead duck in the water. No matter what you do, you've got to actually recognise that you're not going anywhere and cut your losses. I think that's what she's trying to say. Is that right, Anne?
Well, not quite, because I think you can cut it down. But I think you have to have a willingness to cut it down.
Yes.
And I, I think somehow the willingness isn't quite there from, not from Claire particularly, but from maybe the information she's being given by. It's just the way when you can.
If that's the case, once, once, once we get complete clarity on what we're looking at in terms of numbers, then as I say, I think we then, we can set a precept that we're comfortable with. I don't, I think there'll be differences, but I think we'll reach a majority. And at that point, the time to then look at that is the period that we'll have between January and April, between the new financial year starting, because we will know what sort of level of hole we've got to fill. And we will have a short period of time to then balance that. And I for one, I honestly, I don't have any fixed costs until I know whether we're looking at £5,000, £10,000, £15,000 or £50,000. Because clearly what you trim and what you cut, it's not that long ago, we were talking about spending money on people's hedges around the field. Right? And we'd have spent, Claire was getting some prices and we may even have those prices. I'll tell you one thing I won't be voting for is spending any money on that. That's the sort of thing, you know, that we've, you look at what's in the maintenance, there's things that you can make do amend with and there's another way we've been doing that, so you can't cut too far. I don't have any preconceptions until I know what the numbers are telling me we're going to need. I mean, I've just been doing some quick calculations then from the models that we've got. First prediction, if we do nothing, is we will run a £34,000 deficit next year. If I, if I understand it right, if we do nothing, we don't put the precept up and we don't change any of the budgets. Now, not the stupidest thing and not the wisest thing in the year, but we've got £9,600 in the bank if we hit last year on target, which I don't think we will. We've got £10,000 in the Millennium Reserve, which gets you to 19, doesn't get you near £34,000. I think Claire's suggested £11.67 increase, if I, if I read it right, results in a £19,000 increase in a budget to cover that. Unless I've got my figures wrong and I apologise for those in the live streaming if I've got it, got it wrong. But it all depends on that balance between how much of last year's budget we use up and where that balance is then for this year. Until we know that number, I think the level that we're talking about, you, you, you can't start to have preferences until you know whether it's £2,000 or £20,000 that we're looking for.
Good point.
I've cut my hand up because I don't know which button to press. I've got my hand, I think the point we've been trying to make from month to month is that people cannot afford to raise the precept.
Yeah.
We're looking at areas that are really struggling where we're taking food parcels. I keep repeating this, it won't affect perhaps when, it possibly won't even affect our.
Benefit though, isn't it?
That cannot afford these rises. And we need to acknowledge that and find some way around. Really, if you're going to increase it then by 20p, not £5, £10, £15, because people have not got the. Really, if you're going to increase it then by 20p, not five, 10, 15 pounds, because people have not got the money. And we just, you just don't seem to have got that message at all. And that really does concern me.
I agree, Diane. I agree totally with that, totally.
Yeah, so do I.
Put your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify on that, um, Diana. Uh, the people that are getting food parcels will be on um, council benefits and therefore, therefore will not pay the rates anyway.
No, they're not always.
No, no, no. These are working people. No, you've got it. You don't get it. You really don't get it. Sue, come in please. Graham, come in please.
We have got a lot of work poverty, Claire. People in work that are at one or two quid over the limit for a benefit who were struggling to survive truly.
Laid off on zero hours contracts who aren't getting any work, aren't getting any benefits. And every penny.
You've got more redundancies to come yet, more layoffs, more people who will not have a job.
We've got a.
They will understand what it's called. They will understand if we cut things rather than pay for things that they will do without the litter picker. They will do without the bar before they'll find another £20 to pay for it.
Yep.
Because they haven't got it.
Would understand paying council tax, getting nothing for it.
Going round in circles.
We go around, we've, we've discussed it, we've heard your view.
This is why we need to get the number first and then these are discussions to know when we've got the number. Because i- if, if, the, the other thing that we can't do, and I'm very, very sympathetic, Graham. I mean, we're members, we're all members of the same party, so you're not going to find the papers between on that. But if we end up, say, uh, we, the overrun that we have from this year outstrips the balances that we've got. And we're posting a budget that's going to be a £34,000 deficit, A, we're breaking the law. Right, fact. So at that point, there has to be £34,000 worth of cuts. If for some reason this year's out turn is £25,000 and we've only got 19 in the bank. There's £3,000 worth of cuts from this year and there's £34,000 from next year. That's what um, what's, Claire's figures are saying. If that's the case, I would not rule anything out, anything.
Okay.
It's just at that point, it's a complete redesign of what this council looks like in 2020. Until we know that number, it's, it's, we're, we're just waiting to waste a lot of time. And a lot of emotional energy and burn a lot of unity over what it is. Because is it this, is it that, is it the other? It's not constructive to really look at it until we look at what hole we're looking to fill in.
Right.
I'm usually sympathetic to that, Graham.
Yeah, yeah. Ju- just, just to say, Chair, that I, I'm completely on board with what Mike has said. I, I too am sympathetic to what Graham and Sue and Diana have talked about. I remember back in 2012, standing up in, in full council when I was on the Borough Council. And, you know, I was the person that led the motion that the Labour Group tabled on in work poverty. Um, so I'm completely sympathetic to that and I understand exactly where they're coming from. And they're, and you are right on that, folks. Um, but Mike is spot on when he said that in some respects, this is an academic discussion until we've got the number. Um, and that, that's what we need in order to progress.
Yeah, so let's, I think we've, I think everybody's had their point of view across unless I'm wrong. So can't progress this any further until we've got those figures. Are we going to have a subcommittee or are we just going to bring it back to a full meeting?
I think the next meeting should be a full meeting. If we find ourselves needing to look at cuts that aren't like 300 quid, I think we set up a subgroup to look at that. And then my view would be instead of it being a Labour, you know, backroom committee, we should look at setting a small group up to um, look at what those, how we balance, we set a budget with reductions in servicing costs of whatever the number is. And then the group set up to, to look at that between January and 1st, 5th of April to actually implement it. So that we do a responsible thing and hand over a balanced budget. I mean, don't forget, we're going, a new council could come in and change that. They can't put the precept up because obviously they've got to live with it. But if somebody's, if a new set of people come in and say, well, I think we should spend a thousand less on Peel Hall, but maintain the, the planters at the front of the park. A new council's perfectly happy to do that, but we have to set it, we have to, we have to hand them a balanced budget. We have a legal obligation to do that.
Okay, so can we make any dates or anything now or is it, we're just up with, there's a date in the motion?
So you want all the paperwork from me by the Friday, the 9th of January at the latest.
The latest.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but that's the absolute deadline. And then the meeting is half of January at seven o'clock from what I understand from the motion. Yep.
And if you're struggling to talk, pick up the phone, call me, Zoom meeting with me. Um, you know, we've got that, still got that emergency group, Julian. If there's, if, if there's something, you know, have we got to make a provision for bad debt? That's one of my other concerns on cash flow that's in that, that table, that's tabled, the late, the latest stuff that's been tabled. If there's anything like that, because if we need to make a provision for it, that needs to be in the deficit as well. Or are all the people good, could, you know, they're NHS and.
The ma- the majority of them um, I've spoken to so far are looking like paying. It's just getting, when we're going to get paid, whether it's going to be January or whatever else. But one of the gentlemen, the, the Odo's, one of the largest amounts is already part paid, um, coming to thank yesterday.
Oh, lots of stuff coming in yesterday. So that, that debt chase is working. So that's another positive.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we've finished that. I, what's this message? Yes, you think. Okay, um, let's move on to uh, the next item, which is recommendation of a local auditor, AIGAR 1920. Claire, do you want to address us on this one?
Um, this was.
I'm happy to.
Go on, Julian.
That he had some comments on the thing for.
I mean, this is largely technical, essentially because of our interactions with the external auditor. Um, due to an IT hitch, the auditor did not receive our annual governance review submission by the normal date. And they, they then begin to change up that process. So what the auditor have done is they issued a formal recommendation to us, which is, which is in the agenda in front of you. Recommendation being that the smaller authority, the unit parish council, should submit the approved annual governance and accountability return um, for the year ended 31st of March for our review, the auditor's review, within seven days of the public meeting required as a result of this recommendation. The meeting today has been set up to comply with that public meeting requirement of the auditors. Um, so, so we won't be able to write to the auditors within the seven days of that as well. But in actual fact, the whole process has been overtaken by events. Um, we have now submitted the annual governance return to the auditors. So there isn't really an issue for them, but there's no way of disposing of that recommendation without going through this formal meeting process. So the AIGAR documents have been published, they've been published on the website. The, the period for the public to inspect the, the governance and final audit from the council's documents uh, has been complied with. That notice did go on the website. Um, so everything is in order in that respect, but we, we, as a council, you need to respond to that auditor's recommendation.
Or is it just for one of us to move that recommendation on item four is moved and it's a procedural issue?
I, I would suggest, Chair, probably three, three, uh, threefold recommendation for this, that you accept the auditor's recommendation. That you know that the AIGAR has already been submitted to the auditors.
Aye.
Having already complied with the publicity requirements. And that subject to the decision in, in item five to follow. Um, the revised section two of the AIGAR be submitted within that seven day period.
I'll move that.
I'll second that. Get that to the vote. Is everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
That's carried. So if we finish with that then, Julian, is that all we need to do?
No, again, there's a further technical recommendation and it's, it's prompted by the same issue.
Is that at five?
Item five, yeah. I, I'm sorry, item five, Chair. Um, the auditor, uh, the deadline for submitting the AIGAR to the auditors is 30th of November. On that date, the auditor normally issue their final certification of the accounts. But because they only saw the, the AIGAR on that date, they had to issue an interim report. So again, a similar process applies. The council must consider the, the interim report and decide what, what is any action is necessary. The interim report is included within the agenda pack to you. But effectively, it just says, uh, we've only just got the, the AIGAR details. Uh, we'll look at it and um, issue the certificate when we've had time to, to read it. So again, I, I think what I'm asking the council to do on this occasion is just to, to note the, the report. Um, spare me a sec. Well, so we're looking at, note the external audit report. Due to an I, an IT issue, the auditor did not receive the AIGAR until the 30th of November. Notwithstanding the fact that the details were submitted before that date. Um, to note that the notice for the exercise of public rights and the, the relevant sections of the AIGAR have been published on the council's website, including the section three certificate. But to note that the work to, uh, the work taken to identify the discrepancy identified in the Au- in the August um, papers has been undertaken. And that those uh, figures have now been reconciled. Uh, and that, that um, there's actually, there's um, revised section two of the AIGAR within the packing from today, which, which identifies the, the correct figures. And the final bit would be to um, to, to approve sending, the signing off of that revised section two of the AIGAR uh, for yourself as Chair to sign and for submission to the auditors in accordance with the, the previous meeting agreed. So effectively, it's, it's a technical issue in terms of signing off the, the auditors interim report and dotting all the R's and crossing the T's.
Okay, and for everyone to note that report.
Yeah, to, to note the report and to, to agree those actions flowing from the, the approval.
And just to be clear, that the error, that we did fill the form in wrong. And that the error is a transcription error, the number is actually correcting the accounts, but it was transcribed onto the form incorrectly, I understand it. So it's not as though there's any money gone missing. It was just the wrong num- wrong.
Nothing's gone missing. Um, it's because of a previous transcription error that's been carried forward. So um, you'll see there's a 2018, 19 adjustments for the start and close balances and then obviously the revised one.
Okay, so is everybody happy to agree to those recommendations and then I'll sign off?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right then, so that's that dealt with. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda for us to do, is there?
Could I just request a small part two on, we've got some paperwork with the cash flow prediction and.
All right, if we're moving to part two then, uh, that, that finishes part one. Um, so that will end the live feed. And then I'll propose that we move to part two.